We are very pleased to have with us this evening Bryce Miller, who's going to lead us in the pledge and a moment of silence. Bryce?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Bryce? Would you stay here so you can talk to us a little bit? Did you bring some? Are you good with that? Is it? Yeah, okay. Perfect. Do you have someone here with you you'd like to introduce?
Mommy, daddy, Papa, and Ms. Wilford, our principal.
Mrs. Wilford is your?
Principal.
Your principal. Well, welcome. Happy to be, happy to have you here with us. Bryce, I understand you're a kindergarten student. How's that going for you? Are you enjoying kindergarten?
Yeah.
What's the best thing about kindergarten?
Because I get to learn new things.
You get to learn things?
New things.
New things. What's your favorite thing to do when you're not in school?
I love to play with my toys.
Okay, that's a happy thing to do. Do you have pets, Bryce? No pets? And you like to play with your toys. Do you have a favorite toy?
No, not yet.
Not yet? You just love them all, huh? That's a good thing. Colleagues, do you have anything you'd like to ask of Bryce? Mr. Gesard?
Bryce, do you have any brothers or sisters?
I have one brother. I have one baby brother and no baby sisters.
Are they kind of annoying at times, or do you like them?
They're kind of annoying.
You'll learn to appreciate them as you get older. Well, thank you so much for coming this evening, and you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to say hi to Bryce because he's a family member. And Bryce, don't you play soccer?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought so. You really like soccer, don't you? I hear you're pretty good. And you have one brother, right, Paxton? Yeah.
We know you're fast.
Thanks for coming, Bryce. We're so glad you were here.
Thank you, Bryce. First item on our agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move for approval of the agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any discussion of the agenda?
Madam President. I'd like to propose amending the agenda to move up items 2.01, 2.02, and 2.03 to immediately following approval of the minutes.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any discussion on Mr. Bickford's amendment? No? All those in favor of amending the agenda? All right, we're unanimous in that. Student member concurs. The vote now is on the approval of the agenda as amended. All those in favor? We are unanimous. Student member concurs. Let's move to the approval of the minutes.
Mrs. Williams, I move for the approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, April 17, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Gesard. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reidenair. Any additions or corrections to that set of minutes? All those in favor of approval? Right, seven to zero.
Yes, and I'd like to also move for the approval of the second set of closed session minutes dated Tuesday, April 17, 2018.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Any additions or corrections to that set of minutes? All those in favor of approval? Okay, seven to zero.
And for the final approval of the business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, April 17, 2018.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any additions or corrections to that set of minutes? All those in favor of approval? Seven to zero. Student member concurs. So that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. President Williams, members of the board. Tonight, I'm very honored that we have three presentations we're going to present in the first part of the superintendent's presentation. We have geography B winners here from elementary and middle schools. Some of those students are going to advance to the state level competition. In a few minutes, I'm going to ask Kate Long, our middle school social studies content specialist, to come forward and share just a brief comment about the geography B. B, excuse me, and introduce our students. The board members, in a few minutes, will go down front and greet our students as they come forward. Also tonight, we have with us our 2018 Skills USA Maryland State Champions. These are students from Tech High that earned a gold medal status, and we're pleased to honor them tonight. I know we have a number of staff members I see in the audience from Tech High. And Mr. Pine, our supervisor of career in technology education, will come forward and introduce those students. And again, the board members will have an opportunity to greet them. And then finally, as part of my initial part of the report, I want to talk just a moment about proclamation of National Teacher Day, which is May 8. We obviously won't be at a board meeting next week, so we want to recognize our teachers. I want to thank all of our teachers that work so hard in our system. Almost 1,800 teachers work in our school system and do an excellent job every day. And on behalf of the board and myself, CES staff, we want to thank them. But we have a proclamation the board has signed, and we're going to present it tonight to our new teacher of the year for 2018. And Ms. Bishop will be sharing that information. So before we begin with those recognitions, we have a video clip, I think, of Tech High and some of their awards. And if you could turn your attention to the video screens, we'll play that. And board members, if you'd start making your way down front as that video is being played, we'll be ready with our presentation with Ms. Long. Thank you. In just a few minutes, we'll recognize our Tech High students, but we're going to start with our geography B winners.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the board, and thank you, Dr. Michael, for recognizing these students. Tonight, we're here to recognize some of Washington County's finest. In the county, students in grades four through eight participate in the National Geographic B. Tonight, we're recognizing the first place winner for each of our elementary and middle schools, and we would also like to extend our most sincere congratulations to the students that advanced to the state geography B held on April 6. As each name is called, we ask that the students come forward to be recognized and shake the hands of the board members. We ask that all students remain standing, you guys know what to do, and that the audience hold your applause until all students have been recognized. Following recognition, all students will gather in the cafeteria for light refreshments and distribution of their awards. Students, we're going to get started. From Boonsborough Elementary School, we have Ashlyn O'Connor. She advanced to the state B. From Boonsborough Middle School, we have Erica Davidson, also a state B advancer. From Cascade Elementary School, William Uzil. From Clear Spring Middle School, not with us this evening, Gage Crampton. Elizabeth Lawson, one, from Clear Spring Middle School. Anna Steig from E. Russell Middle. Stephanie Taylor from Eastern Elementary. Henry Lewis from Emma K. Dow. Jack Smith from Fountain Rock Elementary School. We have Barna Begzad from Fountaindale Elementary School. Not with us this evening, Jackson Berger from Greenbrier Elementary. We have Nick Creek from Hancock Elementary. Ethan Colosmo from Hancock Middle, a state advancer. From Hickory Elementary, not with us, Abigail Lumen. We'd like to recognize Donovan Baldwin from Jonathan Hager Elementary. Haylen Hi from Lincolnshire. Parker Sweeney from Morgansville Elementary. Ryan Fleetwood from Northern Middle, a state advancer, not with us this evening. Declan Dow from Old Forge is not with us. Matthew McCartney from Pangborn has also not joined us this evening, but we'd like to recognize Ryan Meredith from Paramount Elementary School. Nathan Shaw from Pleasant Valley Elementary. Connor Davis from Potomac Heights Elementary. Adrian Wamiru from Rockland Woods Elementary. Not with us tonight is Trey Jackson from Salem Avenue. Abraham Denham from Sharpsburg Elementary School. Carson Freiter from Smithsburg Elementary School. Jared Reynolds from Smithsburg Middle School did advance to the state competition. Kayden Palamar from Springfield Middle School. Patrick McCarthy from Western Heights Middle, also a state advancer. And last but certainly not least, Elijah Gross, a state advancer from Williamsport Elementary School. I agree. Let's applaud. We'll bring students forward for a photo. Parents, I'll get out of the way so you can take those pictures.
Okay, we promise we're not going to lecture students. We're going to escort them right straight from the cafeteria. There's a reception for the geography B winners. And parents, you can feel free to follow your students down the way. If others will be down.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Michael, Mrs. Williams, member of the board. Tonight, we're proud to be here to honor our National Skills USA qualifiers. Just to give you just a brief background, we had 67 students from Washington County Technical High School compete. We had 36 students medal, 11 gold, 8 silver, 17 bronze. These are your gold medal winners. Early childhood education, Katie Harding. Electrical construction wiring, Ryan Robertson. Crime scene investigation, Jody Bent. Crime scene investigation, Jordan Kimball. Crime scene investigation, Alicia Smith. In the area of career pathways showcase arts audiovisual technology and communication, Caleb Gee. In the area of career pathways showcase business management and administration, Christopher Trovinger. In the area of career pathways showcase business management and administration, Dylan McGill. In the area of career pathways showcase business management and administration, Malik Fuller-Williams.
Thank you. At this mission, would come forward, I'd like you to share proclamation.
At this time, we would like to present the Teacher Appreciation Proclamation. Accepting it is our Teacher of the Year, Janine Horst, 5th grade, Cascade Elementary School. While Janine is shaking hands and accepting the proclamation, I'd like to take a moment to read it. Teachers make public schools great, and teachers work to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams. And teachers keep American democracy alive by laying the foundation for good citizenship. And teachers fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, and mentors. And teachers continue to influence us long after our school days are only memories. Therefore, be it proclaimed by Washington County Public Schools and the Washington County Board of Education that May 8, 2018, is observed as National Teacher Day in recognition of the impact teachers have on all of our lives. And we all say, "Thank you, and we appreciate you."
Williams, that completes my part of the report for right now. I do have some items a little bit later in the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. At this time, we'll move to public comment. I'd like to read from Policy KD. Each person wishing to address the Board of Education is encouraged, but not required, to sign up prior to the meeting and may address any topic concerning Washington County public schools except personnel or student matters which clearly identify an individual or individuals. Each speaker may speak up to five minutes. I have two sheets I'm working from. I believe this is the first one. Mr. Herbert? Herbert? How do you pronounce it? Herbert? Sir, Mr. Bickford is our timer, and he will indicate with that symbol when you have 30 seconds remaining of your five. Okay? He is, indeed.
We're talking together, so we thought we'd just come up together.
Okay, thank you.
If that works for you all.
That works. Thank you.
And let me introduce us very briefly. My name is Jim Herbert. I am a resident of Washington County, Hagerstown. I'm also CEO of a company called Strategic Innovation at the Edge. And essentially, what we do is on a nationwide and international basis, for that matter, is design and implement wireless networks in the LTE standard. So we've worked with large companies to engineer and design global networks. And Gary is our chief financial officer. And we're here to speak on behalf of the request to put a cell tower on the north end of town. We feel very strongly that this is strongly beneficial for the community, and we want to give you a little bit of reasons why we believe that. I'm going to ask Gary to kind of... I did submit a letter to you folks back a couple weeks ago. And I'm going to ask Gary if he wouldn't mind reading that letter, because it might be a good introduction.
Certainly, yeah. We submitted a letter to the Board of Education and Dr. Michaels. President Williams, you were kind enough to acknowledge receipt is same, and I appreciate that very much. So we wanted to read it and put it into the public record. Site Strategic Innovation at the Edge LLC is a Hagerstown-based company located in the main building of the University of System Maryland, Hagerstown, and consists of recognized experts in the area of wireless communications and the latest technologies who are committed to advancing that technology. Hagerstown is fortunate that Shentel Communications of Edinburgh, Virginia, is a major cellular infrastructure affiliate in Washington County, providing Sprint wireless services in our communities. Besides Sprint, Shentel also owns or controls a majority of the cell towers in our area that support wireless communications for other major providers like Verizon, T-Mobile, and AT&amp;T. The demand for wireless access in the region, particularly in the northern part of the community, is rapidly exceeding the capacity of the transmission equipment that could be placed on existing towers. Without additional transmitting capacity, service levels will degrade for residents and businesses. Our schools require increased demand for services as the students' use of Facebook, Twitter, and other social media services continues to grow. Additionally, the Hagerstown Regional Airport is one of our community's most important economic engines, and access to wireless communications and broadband is critical to support that continued growth. Most importantly, however, is the growing demand for emergency services with the rapid introduction of FirstNet as a national emergency services network. Access to emergency services in and around our schools and the airport cannot be supported with existing facilities, and without increased cellular tower capacity, the community runs the real risk of experiencing service outages when that service is needed the most. We applaud the board's far-sighted support for the new cell tower at North High School and encourage your continued support for the project. Not only will it provide excellent revenue for the Board of Education, but it will also aid our students, businesses, homeowners, and emergency services in the area. Any help we can provide you in the final decision process, please feel free to call on us. We share this community with all of you and wish to see it grow. Thank you.
And let me just add a couple of kind of ad hoc comments to that situation. I also, some of you may realize, I also serve on the Economic Development Committee for Washington County. And I'm very interested in ways to improve the overall economic life of the community. We recognize that we live in an area where sometimes that's challenging. But we believe that we have resources here which can be extremely beneficial in that area, and certainly wireless communications is one of them. Not only is it a strong advocate and help to create economic development, but at the same token, its absence is a horrible penalty. So if you think about the downside, the downside of not having it is much worse than the advantages of the upside of having it. So it is very critical for economic growth. So I strongly suggest that you consider that positively in your thoughts. Also, just for an open disclosure, we have no financial relationships with Shentel. We do know, I do know Shentel very, very well. I used to be the president of an independent telephone company in the Midwest, and Willie Pirtle, who's the president of Shentel Wireless, has been a 25-year friend of mine. So I have a longstanding relationship with him, but no financial relationship with him at this point. I also have a relationship with Antietam Cable and worked a lot with Antietam Cable to bring wireline communications, fiber, to all of your schools. And in fact, we're working now on the last two, which we believe will come to pass very quickly. So I'm very familiar with the communications requirements of the school system. So that's basically just from a disclosure perspective about who I am and what I do. But we also work with companies literally all over the world in terms of helping them in their communications requirements. So we're happy to be here and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
And lastly, if I might, I would like to also add, I'm a resident of the north end. If you asked me, would I like to see this tower someplace else? The answer is, of course. I would also prefer not to drive through the speed cameras at Paramount Elementary School five or six times a day. And I wish that the C-130s didn't fly over my house when they practiced their landings at Hagerstown Regional Airport. It's the cost of progress, and it needs to be addressed. And again, I think the kind of public-private partnership that you've brought forward is extraordinarily important to this community. You can be a model as to how we can develop other public-private partnerships for the community. community. And so we encourage you to vote positively on the cell tower at North High. And as Jim said, if there's anything he can answer for you, be happy to help him along. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Madam Chairwoman, members of the Board, since we last met, the peer review of the $25 million study conducted by the National Institutes of Health's National Toxicology Program was concluded, and it reported, in their strongest words, "clear evidence of carcinogenic activity." An investigative report in the nation states, contrary to the impression that most news coverage has given the public, 90% of the 200 existing studies in the NIH database have found a significant impact, showing that wireless radiation can lead to cancer and other diseases. A survey of the scientific literature shows that 72% of neurological studies and 64% of DNA studies have found adverse effects from this radiation. A separate review of medical studies found that in 80% of the studies, people living as far as 1/3 of a mile away had an increased prevalence of cancer and adverse neurobehavioral symptoms. A professor of bioengineering at the University of Washington reviewed the available studies on cellphone radiation for a 16-year period and looked at where their funding came from. What he found was that 50% of 326 studies showed a biological effect and 50% did not. But when he filtered the studies into two stacks, those funded by the telecom industry and those which were funded independently, he discovered that whereas only 30% of the industry-funded studies found there was a biological effect, 70% of the independent studies did. He also points out that the 50-50 split alone should be cause for concern. In his words, "Even if you accept all the industry studies, you still end up with 50-50. How could 50% be garbage?" Maryland's own Stained Advisory Council on Children's Environmental Health and Protection recommended that local school systems should limit exposure to Wi-Fi as much as physically practical. Another thing to take note of is that cell towers are frequently not within the limits set by the federal government. We like to believe that someone is making sure that the radiation is within the specified limits, but the truth is FCC does not do a very thorough job of monitoring cell towers. When the cell tower at Landisville Middle School in Lancaster County, Pennsylvania, was measured, the power density was found to be four times higher than the absolute maximum that had been promised at the zoning board hearings. Despite repeated attempts, I've been unable to get a definitive answer from Hagerstown's planning and zoning as to whether the tower would be classified... Sorry, classified as a hazmat site, but it does appear that it would, aside a high school. And just this morning, there was a major cell tower fire near Philadelphia. KYW Radio said the blaze was hot enough to melt the antennas and damaging the tower, causing it to lean. I would note that the International Association of Firefighters headquartered in Washington, DC, also opposes the placement of cell towers on any fire stations. I don't think any money that could potentially be paid by Milestone outweighs the potential for harm from this tower. In fact, despite the claim of $400,000, as it's been reported lately, it would appear that, as of this time, with only one carrier signed on the tower, the Board would only receive $16,000 per year. When we see organizations such as the American Academy of Pediatrics with 60,000 board-certified medical doctors, and the International EMF Scientist Appeal, signed by 237 scientists from 41 nations around the world who specify in the study of electromagnetic fields, when we see these organizations urging caution, we need to listen. I know that we all want to do what's safe for our citizens and our students. Here in Washington County, let's not take chances with our children.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Matt Moser?
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Matt Moser. This is my second time coming before you to speak in opposition to the proposed cell tower at North High School. As you know, I work for Washington County Public Schools and the IT Department, but once again tonight, I'm speaking to you as a concerned parent and resident of Washington County. My home is the closest residence to the proposed cell tower location. I have two young boys, as I told you guys a couple weeks ago, that are under the age of two and a half that will be living less than 250 feet from where this tower could be placed. Since I spoke last, the $25 million multi-year study conducted by the National Toxicology Program has concluded after an external peer review was conducted just last month, so that's of March of 2018, that it confirms our worst fears that over time, low-level cellphone and cell tower radiation can and does cause rare forms of brain cancer and a myriad of other health problems. The timing of these findings alone should ignite concern and have this Board questioning whether to exercise the precautionary principle, thus not placing this tower on school grounds or near residential neighborhood. Over the past few weeks, you've also received numerous emails citing reputable scientific evidence from around the world confirming these legitimate health concerns in other studies. I am extremely concerned, of course, for my boy's safety as well as the safety of the students at North High and my nearby neighbors. A few weeks ago, an online petition was created to give a voice to those people who expressed similar concerns, and that's really the reason why I'm back here tonight, is to show you what you have here in front of you, which is 100, and it's now 96. People have signed the petition to say no to the proposed cell tower at North High. That's 196 people. There are also 53 comments from these petition signers, and I would like to read just a few of them to you now to give these folks a voice. Bethany Phillips says, "This location is the last place the tower should be placed. Our children and future generations should be shielded from the effects of 5G." Deborah Myers says, "Prevent this from happening at this location. Health threats to those close to it now and also future generations." Samuel LaQuin says, "Please put our children's safety first. A new cell tower is not necessary. Everyone will live without it, literally." Terry Joe Matthews says, "I am 100% against a cell tower being placed at this location. A cellphone tower is completely unnecessary on school grounds. I also think it's sad that this is even being discussed. Is the health and safety of our children really worth that little to WCPS?" Rory Murphy says, "There are too many health risks to construct a tower like this on school property and in a residential neighborhood. I'm opposed to this tower." Deborah Catheman says, "A cell tower on school property does nothing to promote learning. Washington County Public Schools, please act in the best interest of students." It's a sad day when something... When a school is the best place for something like this. That's James Nathan. Susan says, "Please don't do this. We have better areas on the north end that are not near a school." Another person says... Melanie Sylvester says, "North End resident, vote no to the cell tower." Nancy Allen says, "Washington County Board of Edge should take the precautionary measures. No to the cell tower on public school property." And then Austin Heffernan says, "No to the cell tower at North High or any other schools in Washington County." So there are many more. Of course, you have them all before you. I'll stop there. But members of the Board, my family and the community are desperately asking you to think deeply and make the right decision on this issue. Please put my kids, our neighbors, and your WCPS kids first, and vote no to the tower. Thank you.
I have no others who have signed up in advance. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, sir. Would you like to come forward?
Hi, guys.
If you could tell us your name, please, and your address.
Steven Shutey, 304B, North Colonial Drive, Hagerstown, Maryland. I'm sure you guys are sick and tired of seeing me. Tonight, I am not here. As a Sprint guy, I just came from work, obviously, so if I have to cover it, I'll cover it. I just wanted to put out in public record that I do know that the petition for the tower went extremely well in the short amount of time that we had to wrangle that all together. I believe it was well over 400 signatures for. I would like to read a quick email that was also forwarded along to me. I know you guys got it. I think there were some issues with the email system as well, but I wanted to make sure that it was entered in on the record, and I will redact the person's name as it was sent via email. But if we're talking about public safety, I do believe that we need to look at the other side of this coin as well. A lot of research has been presented both ways, but there is one thing that we know that is concrete, and it is the cellphone towers being overloaded. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name is Blank, and I work for... Excuse me. I work as a federal emergency responsible official for FEMA as a contractor. I have great confidence that you will have made a very... Been made very aware of the benefits of having a new cellphone tower installed. However, I implore you to consider the ramifications if you do not sign the approval on the cell tower proposed for your school located on 1200 Pennsylvania Avenue, Hagerstown, Maryland. I recently returned from a five-and-a-half-month deployment from Puerto Rico. As I'm sure most of you are aware, their power grid suffered another total catastrophic failure just last week, six months after the event of Hurricane Maria. This type of fault is similar to what can happen to cellphone coverage in emergency situations. One tower goes down due to overload, and the traffic gets rerouted to another local tower, and rage causing a failure, and so on. The situation here is dire, and it needs to be corrected. You as members have the opportunity to help resolve this issue. The biggest fear I come across in my line of work is that of the unknown, loved ones begging and pleading for any information on those who were impacted. And the hardest thing I have to say is, "I don't know." I've been put in situations where I was the only line of communication to the outside world, and as a government representative in a disaster site, it is not a place I would want to put anyone else. You have to answer the question of, "Why are you not doing anything to make this go away? How could you let this happen? And what are you going to do to fix it?" If you decide to not consent, I respect your decision, but I also hope that you have the ability and courage to answer those questions if something happened at one of your schools and the communication network fails. Parents cannot get a hold of their kids, a school official, or emergency personnel. Also, some agencies will not enter situations until they have approved verification or clarification, similar to the Florida deputies who did not enter the school right away. Please heavily consider the consequences of not allowing the tower placement. I wish you all and hope you make the best decision. Like I said, that was very impactful to me as well, and I hope it's very impactful to you guys. And like I said, I apologize for coming up here again. I've seen a lot of you guys over the past couple months here, but I thank you for your time and wish you the best.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes? Certainly. I'm sorry, sir, if I overlooked you.
Take your pardon?
Please.
I'm a little hard to hear you. I'm Vincent Smith, and how many of you saw my ad I put in the paper?
Yes, I saw it.
Only one? Two? Three?
Mm-hmm.
One, two, three. I have a meter here. Most people don't understand the problem. And I have a cell tower on the farm, and I didn't understand it until just recently. But if you can look up this guy, Dr. Barry Trower, you won't believe the story behind this thing. It's deadly. It's deadly. But I have the meter here, and if you have time, I'll let you use it. You won't believe, when you turn your cellphone down and hit this thing, what it does. So that's about it. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Appreciate you coming out this evening. Your name and address, please.
Nancy Allen. I'm a resident of Washington County.
Thank you.
And I would like to... Before I begin, I would just like to correct a couple things that were stated here previous to me coming up here. I did notice... Let me just say this. When I walked up the steps tonight, you know what I saw? I saw banners that said, "Community, School." That's what I saw. Community was on the top, and school was on the bottom. And that's the way it should be, "Community and School," because the schools are a part of our community. I would like to just correct... I heard the previous speaker say something about the petition for the cell tower, and I was wondering if there was documentation as to how many signatures were received. I looked it up online. When I was just sitting back there waiting for my turn, I saw 83. I would also like to state that when the individual was speaking about the community service and the lack of service in that area, the Hagerstown Fire Chief has gone on record to say that there is no disruption of service in that north-end area. In fact, there are other areas where this cell tower could be placed if there is a need to have additional cell coverage in the north end. But I'm really here because I will read to you what I've prepared, and it's taken me a while to edit this, but I feel very strongly about it, so I will speak my piece. It is with great concern that I'm here tonight to ask you to vote no to the cell tower as proposed at the North Hagerstown High School campus. I would like you to take a precautionary approach and not allow any structure to be erected on a school campus that might be harmful to students, staff, and area residents. In this age of instant communication and advance in technology, it is curious to me as to why there has been no communication by the Washington County Public Schools to parents and area residents of the feeder schools into the North High School District. It would seem prudent and responsible for the Washington County Public Schools to take responsibility to ensure that communication has been made with those who will be most affected by tonight's decision. I find it inexcusable that proper disclosure has not been made. I also find it unacceptable that proper vetting of Milestone Communication has not been explored by the Washington County Public Schools to investigate why other school districts around the surrounding area have canceled contracts with Milestone Communications. As a county taxpayer, I wonder if the money that will be generated by the tower will be equal to the amount less that you will request from the Washington County Commissioners when you appeal to them to fund the school board budget. In other words, since you are fully funded by the taxpayers of Washington County, and now you seek to commercialize the schools and raise funds, will this in turn lower my taxes, because now you will generate your own revenue? I urge you to take a responsible approach and vote no to the cell tower at North High. This will be the first in Washington County Public Schools, and will most likely, others will follow suit. Milestone Communication has their intention to get their foot in the door and expand to all county schools, as they've done in other areas. No amount of money will convince me that the safety and the well-being of our students and our community is worth the risk. Send a message to Milestone. Washington County kids are not for sale. And I was just doing a quick computation, and at $16,000, which is proposed, and approximately 22,000 students, that comes up to 72 cents. I don't think that's worth it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comment? Okay. At this time, we have Board Member Response to Public Comment. Is there anyone who would like to respond in any way? Anything that was said? No? Okay. We'll move on to New Business. We have no Old Business to conduct this evening. Our first item of New Business is the Consent Agenda. Mr. Beigdell, if you'd like to come forward.
Good evening, President Williams, Board Members, Dr. Michael. Tonight, I have nine items for your review. These items were reviewed by our Purchasing Review Committee and are being recommended for award. Staff is available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the awards, renewals, and procurements for secondary English-language arts-literature text with print and digital resources to Houghton Mifflin-Harcourt at a cost of $889,290. High school mathematics electronic textbook digital resource to Pearson Education, Inc. at a cost of $416,717.52. High school science instructional resources to Houghton Mifflin-Harcourt at a cost of $180,600. items for your review. These items were reviewed by our purchasing review committee and are being recommended for award. Staff is available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the awards renewals and procurements for secondary English language arts literature text with print and digital resources to Houghton-Mifflin-Harcourt at a cost of $889,290. High school mathematics electronic textbook digital resource to Pearson Education, Inc. at a cost of $416,717.52. High school science instructional resources to Houghton-Mifflin-Harcourt at a cost of $180,632.60. Middle school science instructional resources to Amplify Science at a cost of $447,204.48. Milk for food and nutrition services to Gallagher Potomac Farms Dairy at an approximate yearly cost of $483,996.30. Blackboard subscription renewal from Blackboard Incorporated at a cost of $69,262. Cleaning products dispensers and services for Food and Nutrition Services Department from Food Safety Solutions, Inc. at a total cost of $97,818. 2030 Apple iPads from Apple, Inc. at a total cost of $596,820. And 2030 Max Shield Extreme S cases from CDWG at a total cost of $38,468.50. And security equipment and service from Atlantic Security System at unit prices.
Thank you. Bickford, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Any questions or discussion?
Please, not a question. No problem with particularly, there's nothing here really that bothers me. The iPads, now, they replacement?
They are, yes.
And how many of our students will get that, I mean, the 20,000, 2,000, 10% of the group? Will they go mostly elementary boy or?
I don't know where specifically they're going. They're replacing our iPad fours that at one time were kind of the front end of the iPad, but they're going to replace those. I imagine they're going across the system probably to designated schools maybe that had some of the older iPads.
It was threes and fours were being replaced, so, yeah.
I'm still of the belief, and I'll continue to say this and probably irritate people, but I'm still of the belief that at least a good portion of our secondary kids should have laptops instead of iPads. I don't think it serves a large number of our students the way a, you know, laptop would serve them. So, you know, as you guys look to the future, I'd love that discussion to become up again, because I really do think that, you know, for some, most of our kids, and most of our secondary kids, particularly kids who are college and college-ready, the iPads do nothing for them, you know, so.
Mr. Ridenhour? I would agree with you, and I've kind of challenged our group that works on our digital learning plan as we develop the next plan for next year, particularly if we could backward map from maybe juniors, starting with juniors and seniors, look at some type of laptop option. The iPad has a lot of capabilities with apps and camera and flexibility, and it's kind of my tool of choice if I'm sitting at night doing email, but if I'm working on a document and trying to create something, you know, if I have the option of my iPad and my laptop, I generally grab the laptop. So, I'm going to encourage staff to continue to look at that. I think, again, as I've talked to parents, if you were moving out into the workforce, you're moving out into college, would you buy your child an iPad or would you buy a laptop? And I'm concerned we're getting further and further away from desktop units and laptop units, as the only device our children might know would be an iPad over time as the rest of these items phase out. So, our team will take another hard look at that, and I'd like for them to seriously consider, you know, are we providing the best options grades three through 12 with the iPad?
The only consideration has always been that laptops are cost prohibitive, but, you know, I'm not sure, I'm not sure in a bulk, you know, if they are as cost prohibitive as we think. And they don't have to be MacBooks, by God.
Yeah, it'd be difficult for us probably to provide a MacBook-level computer, but there are a lot of other options, a lot of other school systems have used other options. So, we just need to continue to find the blend of those worlds. I think these iPads are needed though for a replacement cycle at all rates.
I have no problem with this.
I appreciate your comment.
Any other question?
I have a brief comment to thank Peggy Pugh. I had many, many questions, since we're spending quite a bit of your dollars on curriculum. But a few things that I'm very happy to hear, that it is reducing the weight of backpacks, since not every kid has to have a textbook now, and also that even though this is a pretty considerable expense this year, this is not something that we'll see for another six years, correct?
For these specific books, so, when we used to purchase textbooks, we would frequently spend more than a million dollars every year on textbooks, but we have them on a rotating basis. So, this is covering a small portion of our textbook, ebook needs at this point, but there'll be more resources in the future that'll be needed annually to support students. So, now that we have our curriculum fully in place, we have a good year under our belt with the curriculum, we're hearing the outcry from staff that we need to align some of our resources more appropriately for, not as our curriculum, but as a teaching tool that they need. So, you'll see other books come forward. This won't be the end of textbook purchases. We're saying textbooks, but it's online textbooks and classroom sets of textbooks that are available in hard copy for students to check out if they need one.
Yeah, I was also glad, just reading through how much work goes into and how much feedback you get from teachers on the curriculum, and they, you know, they give very detailed answers on why they like certain things and why they don't like other things. So, I know a lot of work went into this, and I'm happy to approve it.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, the vote then is on Mr. Bickford's motion. All those in favor of approving tonight's consent agenda. All right, seven to zero. Student member concurs. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our second item of new business is the proposed cell tower at North Hagerstown High School. Mr. Prue?
Evening, Mrs. Williams, members of the board. As a brief historical background, Milestone Communications presented a proposal to the Facilities Committee meeting at their meeting on April 2017 for the construction of a cellular tower on the campus of North Hagerstown High School. Subsequent to that meeting, the proposal came to the Board of Education for further consideration, and staff has been working with the Milestone team throughout the process. With your consent, Dr. Michael provided Milestone with authority to proceed with an application for zoning approval on October 6 of 2017. The Hagerstown Board of Zoning Appeals conducted its hearing on the proposed tower application on February 2018 and approved the application. The final written report was published by the City of Hagerstown staff on April 4, 2018. Based upon the agreed-upon process between WCPS and Milestone, the Board of Education must make a final determination on its willingness to proceed with a ground lease for the tower location within 60 days of the Board of Zoning Appeals' ruling, which is June 3, 2018. The Board of Education did receive a presentation from Milestone staff at its public business meeting on Tuesday, March 6. There's been significant public comment at public meetings, also through mail or email, both for and against this topic. At this time this evening, staff is seeking your direction as to how to proceed with the ground lease with Milestone Communications.
Thank you, Mr. Prue. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the proposed cell tower at North Hagerstown High School to be constructed by Milestone Communications. Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gesford. Questions for Mr. Prue, or discussion?
Fine.
Mr. Stauffer?
Speaking personally, this has been one of the toughest decisions I've ever had to deal with since in my year and a half on the Board of Education. I've read all the things that came our way, ad nauseam, and so forth, and all that. It's been a tough decision. It's probably going to be a decision where I'm probably going to be darned if I do and darned if I don't. Let me go through my reasoning on this thing. Number one, I don't accept the argument that cell tower location affect housing prices, but I will tell you this personally, if I were looking at a house on St. Clair Street and I saw that cell tower, I wouldn't buy that, a house on St. Clair Street. That's a personal thing. I'm not so sure that the neighborhoods of Oak Hill and so forth, and those distant neighborhoods are going to be really affected by it. One of the things that I remember from the Milestone people being here was I asked a question about why they couldn't place it up where Maryland Metals is located, across from the Superfund site, the site of the old New York Central Iron Works years and years ago. And they said something, I don't know what it was. I tried to find my notes, and I couldn't come across it, but they said it wasn't a good location because it would affect something, and so this was a better location at North Hagerstown High School. And I don't mean to be disrespectful because they're experts on that stuff, but I just not sold on the fact that moving that tire six to eight hundred yards farther away really affects that. The location, I will tell you, the original location was down by the old track at North High, and it was down the hole, and I realized the tire would have to be higher than what it is even proposed now to come, rise up out of that hole and everything. But I walked into a Facilities Committee meeting one day, and we were talking, discussing it, and suddenly I find out, oh no, this tire is going to be right where you turn into the parking lot for the stadium and everything. I read all the concerns about the health concerns, and quite frankly, I don't know who's right on that. You know, one study said this, one study said this. I don't know who's right on this. But I will tell you, and this may be, I don't know, to me, it's a good reason, but others might say this board member is perhaps rather foolish. The first time Matt Moser testified up here, his two little boys were sitting over here with their mother, and they were laughing and smiling and stuff. Dad was up front and everything, and I would focus back on Matt Moser, and I'd look back at the two little boys and so forth, and being a grandfather of six and so forth, and I thought, you know, Dad's up here asking us to consider his children and so forth. And I'm in my early 70s. I don't know if I'm going to be around another 10 years, 20 years, but I will tell you this, if I found out during my lifetime that one of those boys, or anybody's children for that matter, was affected by the cell tower being placed there, and they could definitively prove that their medical conditions were caused by this tire being there and the radiation and so forth that supposedly comes from it, and all this and that and the other, that would distress me very, very much, knowing that I had a say in where that tire would go. And I think I saw, I didn't bring the paper in, but one of the papers we got was that over 10 years, if there were five carriers, I think the projected revenue was 600 and some thousand dollars. So, if that's the case, that's $60,000 a year. To use a term from a former superintendent long gone from here in describing another piece of revenue, that superintendent described a certain amount of money for a thing one time as chump change. And to me, that's what it is, is chump change. And $60,000 might pay for one beginning teacher and benefits and so forth. And for those reasons, I will cast a vote against the placing of this cell tower at North Hagerstown High School.
Mr. Stauffer, I agree with everything that Mr. Stauffer said. This has been a very, very tough decision for me. I've gone back and forth. I've looked at all the data. I've talked to experts, and the bottom line for me is that I cannot in good conscience vote to put the cell tower right next to that homeowner's property with the two little boys. I can't do it. It goes against everything that I stand for, so I have to say the same thing.
Anyone else?
Did I say something?
Not at this time, sir. I'm sorry. Anyone else? Mr. Ridenhour?
Just a couple of things, and I am supporting it. I want to read a couple of things that I pulled. First was from the World Health.
Ridenhour, excuse me, could you please into the microphone or pull it closer to you? I'm having difficulty here. If I can't hear you, I don't think they can hear you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Several things. First, this came from the World Health Organization. It said in a study, or in a report, "There is no convincing scientific evidence that the weak RF signals from base stations and wireless networks cause adverse health effects." U.S. Food and Drug Administration stated, "Based on all available evidence, there is no increased health risk due to radio frequency energy." The American Cancer Society said, excuse me, in part, "There is little evidence to support the idea that people living or going to school near a cellphone tower would have an increased health risk," and they had evidence in their report as to why. One other thing that was stated at one point, that there would be a 50% or 40, 50% decrease, increase in property values as a result of the cell tower being nearby. I found no evidence of that, zero. As a matter of fact, I haven't found any evidence that there is a difference. I know of one, it's not in Washington County, but one development in Mount Airy where you had one side of the subdivision had a cell tower, and the other side of the subdivision had, did not. The prices were the same. The values were the same. No difference. They were spec houses, so they were all the same for all intents and purposes. So, they're, you know, that's just, that's not accurate. I spoke to a physicist, former board member, who explained to me how the frequencies work and how they're in a narrow band, and that narrow band, there's no evidence that it can do anything or have a damaging effect on cells, which is where we have cancers and other issues that come from, from radiation and others. And, you know, folks, we vote against, or, you know, we've, we've seen in the last year or so, to me, something that's equally scary, much more scary, as a matter of fact. I mean, we depend on these devices. They're part of our lives anymore. We need them. You know, they're important for safety, and we got a call, I think all of us, or most of us got a call from a, oh, company that does-
Security.
Security, and speaking to how important it was to increase, you know, the amount of bandwidth and things that we can use those for, for safety purposes. And the physicist, again, told me how, you know, the amount of radiation or amount of RF, you know, as you increase from 10 feet to 100 feet, it's 1,000 times less. So, from 100 feet away from the base tower, you know, the amount of radio frequency diminishes by 1,000 percent. So, you know, I'm not convinced that it, you know, is a health risk. I think it is a necessity for all of us as far as, you know, the use of cellular and these devices in our lives. So, I will support this, this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Anyone else? Yes, sir, Mr. Diallo?
So, even though my vote's not going to hold that much weight, I'd still like to share my opinion as a student of North Hagerstown High School. So, I went ahead and shared the information from the Chantel meeting and told them of the revenue benefits and, you know, the controversies behind it. I shared these, I shared it to my 100 peers that were at, that were out in the crowd, what they needed to know about this decision. And then, once I finished my report, I received no, I received no concerns. I'm not sure if this, if this is due to high school apathy or not, but in my, but in, but in my opinion, if you have nothing to say, then that means you have nothing against it. And whenever I showed these students the photos of the projected tower, they thought it was so cool. We'd be getting another emblem on the North High campus. Now, I know that you are concerned about health concerns and all the such, but cell phones are an integral part of our society, and I'm, and I'm sure that adding one more cellphone tower, it isn't going to hold that much weight in the grand scheme of things. You do cite a, you do cite a national toxology program report, and in this report, I'm not saying that it's, I'm not saying that it's fact, but it does say that they're using radio frequencies that are much greater, that are, that are exponentially greater than, than, than the, than the levels that people would be experiencing in like the highest levels of cellphone use. So, we're talking about like exponentially larger levels that not even New Yorkers experience. So, I mean, honestly, in my opinion, I see your concern, and yes, this is an ongoing problem that we're going to have to examine year by year, but for this- problem that we're going to have to examine year by year, but for this case, I don't see an issue in this cellphone tower.
Anyone else? I would just like to say that for me, it's regrettable that we, as a board, are considering the cell tower construction because we need revenue to address the growing and pressing needs of our students. I find that very regrettable, that we're looking at this construction of a cell tower as a way to bring in revenue. We may need a cell tower in the north end of Hagerstown, but I don't think we need it on North Hagerstown High School's property. I think placing a cell tower on school property is not a precedent that I'm interested in setting. So my vote will be no. Anyone else? If not, I'll call for the vote. The vote is to approve the proposed cell tower at North Hagerstown High School to be constructed by Milestone Communications. All those in favor? One, two, I'm sorry, one, two, three. One, two, three, four votes in favor. Student member concurs. Those opposed? Three votes in opposition. The motion carries. The proposed cell tower at North Hagerstown High School to be constructed by Milestone Communications has been approved. Our next item of business is, Mr. Prue, again, the Food and Nutrition Services FY 2019 operating budget. Mr. Prue.
Thank you. Good evening. A pleasure to be in front of you this evening with Mr. Emble, supervisor of Food and Nutrition Services, to present the FY 2019 Food and Nutrition Services operating budget. Things are still moving in Washington, swirling around. You know, we got an email late this afternoon on new changes in terms of an old adage we used to call paid lunch equity in terms of a requirement that we may have had in the law in the last food and nutrition reauthorization to raise meal prices on an annual basis that may have passed in the last funding bill, and we're still getting clarification on things, and there's a lot going on in Washington. Sometimes when it seems there's not much going on, there's still a lot going on. So with that, Mr. Emble has prepared staff's budget for your review, and I will turn it over to him to take the lead.
Good evening, everyone. So the first slide that you have in front of you is our breakfast participation chart. We're projecting, you know, some flat growth. There was a year where we had a slight decline, and we're looking at about a flat growth in average breakfast participation. Moving on to lunch participation, same thing. You're going to notice, you know, there was a large increase in meal participation in the 2016 year. The last two years have been fairly flat. You know, we are, as you know, a fairly new team in the Food and Nutrition Services department, and we're going to be meeting this summer to look at our lower performing schools. You know, we have some really, really great performing schools, and we have a few others that are lower performers, and seeing where we can't, you know, get back to the year that we had in 2016 and continue growth with lunch participation. The next slide will show your planned expenditures. Obviously, the line share of the expenditures is in your salary and benefits, and then food costs, which is pretty standard for the food service industry. The next slide is the planned revenue. Again, the line share coming from federal and state payments, and then smaller portions coming from student and à la carte and catering sales. The next, the next slide, I think, is the most important. You know, we are not coming to the board this year asking for a meal price increase. We have a balanced budget in front of you. In speaking with our partners, there are a lot of school systems that haven't gotten to this point yet in their budget cycle. Frederick indicated that they would be increasing prices, but was not able to give me an exact amount, and the same for Allegheny. There's actually currently a state survey going around to look at meal prices, but I'm happy to announce that we're not coming tonight asking for a meal price increase for next year. The next slide, Jeff and I talked about including the equipment investment that we've made. You know, one point four million dollars over the last several years. You'll notice that this year, we are projected at three hundred forty-three thousand, eight forty-three. We are in the process of end of the year spending. You know, we have a lot of outdated equipment, and that is a continual need that we have to continue to invest in the department, in our serving line areas, and in our cooking equipment. So we're going to continue to invest in those areas.
Another thing I can, Mike, before we flip on, one of the things we've tried to do over the last number of years that's reflected in these numbers is really try to do a lot of investment behind the scenes, sort of in the kitchen, sort of building the infrastructure. So we're ready to set forth the growth that Mike's talked about, and a lot of our new construction, we're adding cooking kitchens back into the schools where we had a period where we were doing, you know, satellite out from, you know, six sites coming out of one kitchen, and we're going back to that sort of scratch cooking, back at the individual sites as much as we can so that we can put the freshest possible product in front of our students at each, at each location. It does take a larger investment, and that's where we are. And I think, moving forward, some of our growth is going to be when we are able to tip the window and say, we're done, and we're good back of the house, and let's get out in the front, and let's look at what we really look like from a service perspective. Students do truly eat with their eyes and their noses and all their senses, just as we do as adults, and so giving them really something that's a little bit more of a retro look, food court look and so forth, like we've done with some of our grant schools like E. Russell Hicks, we were able to use some federal dollars recently, really gives the program a little bit of a shot in the arm where we know we can provide good product to our students.
We're also looking to do some new things. We're in the process of researching salad bars. We currently do not have any salad bars in our schools, and we're looking at some of our, in our high schools that might be stretched the seams with the lines. And if we can add another line by adding a salad bar, I think we can get the kids through faster, and I think we're going to capture some of those students that may not be participating. And then, you know, we have some experience with doing a lot with a little bit of money that has big impact, and I'm talking the front of the house again, you know, fresh coat of paint, some overlays over top of some of the current equipment. And again, that, you know, the children eating with their eyes is very true, and I think we'll see some participation increases from that as well. With that said, the last slide shows you a balanced budget, and from that, I'll open it up for questions.
Is there a motion?
So moved to accept.
Okay. So the motion is to approve the proposed FY 2019 Food and Nutrition Services operating budget. Questions for the gentleman? Any discussion?
Can I ask a question? We argued about the delinquents in the past. I've lost. So I'm going to ask you, did we build anything in the budget, you know, as a placeholder in case there's non-payment? I mean, is there anything in there that would give us flexibility to handle that until the end of the year or whatever the case might be?
Mr. Reidenauer, that would have to be an expense incurred out of the Board of Education general fund budget. That's not a debt absolution that can come from the food services as an enterprise fund.
That's exactly right. Thank you.
Potentially, that's something we can look at, you know, as we look at forward adjustments. That might be something we can handle there.
No, I apologize. You're exactly right, and you pulled me there.
I will let you know, Mr. Reidenauer, that we, my team and myself, we're in the process of developing superintendent's regulation to that policy to present to Dr. Michael, and we should have that to him within the next several weeks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any further discussion? So the motion is to approve the Food and Nutrition Services operating budget for FY 2019. All those in favor? Unanimous. Student member concurs.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next item of business is first reading of proposed changes, changes, changes to policy INB, Teaching About Controversial Issues Political Activities. Good evening, Mr. Trotta.
Good evening. Thank you. As part of the Policy Committee's comprehensive review of the policy manual, it discussed policy INB at its public sessions conducted on February 28th, March 27th, and April the 24th. The Policy Committee is offering the following recommendations with regard to this policy. First, that the title be changed to read Teaching About Political, Cultural, and Other Controversial Issues. Secondly, that it be placed in the standard format. Additionally, that a purpose clause be added. And as you examine the proposed changes, you'll see that the modifications reflect the new title that's being proposed this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy INB, which is entitled Teaching About Controversial Issues Political Activities.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reidenauer. Questions? Discussion? Mrs. Fisher, would you like to speak first since it's your motion?
I think that the primary changes we made to this were to cover a variety of controversial issues, not just the political activities, which obviously is the reason for changing the title. It just needed to be put in format and expanded that little bit to cover the other items. So it wasn't a real deep discussion like we've had for some of our policies recently.
Mr. Reidenauer?
Just one thing, and I'll send it to you, Tony, at some point. I like the purpose statement except for one part, and I'll send you something that I'd like to see considered. But I think that, you know, that cleans things up a little bit by having that purpose there, just some language that I'd like to see considered.
Thank you. So the motion is to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy INB entitled Teaching About Controversial Issues Political Activities. All those in favor? Seven to zero. Student member concurs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and we're back to the second half of the superintendent's report.
Okay. The first part of our superintendent's, or second part of our superintendent's part, but the first part and the second part, healthcare quarterly update. We've been trying to keep the board well informed. Obviously, we spend in excess, I believe, about forty million dollars on healthcare at this point. A year ago, we spent somewhere between seven point eight and eight point two million dollars on just the board side of the increase, twenty-five percent increase to our employee's side as well as the board of education side. So we wanted to keep you updated on that fund balance and other items that concern the health, healthcare employees. So that, I'm going to turn it over to David and Gina to share that update.
Good evening, President Williams and members of the board. Dr. Michael, as Dr. Michael mentioned, we would like to update you on a quarterly basis. We did the last one in January. Now we are looking at year-to-date results through March. You can see here that we still have a very favorable financial statement with three point five million dollars of net profit year-to-date. You'll also note on that chart to the right, though, that each spring, the average weekly claims grows compared to the first half of the year. The FY eighteen figure there is just for the three months, January through March, but you can see that it's higher and it's about on par with last, with last year, whereas in the fall, the first, well, the first six months, we were lower than the prior year, eight seventy-eight versus eight ninety-one per week. So that's just something that we, that we, you know, watch that trend, and that our results of operations seem to deteriorate towards the end of the fiscal year. And I think you'll see on the next slide also, we have the status of the fund balance there, and we've got, started off, four point one million dollars with a deficit, and we've got the three point five million that I referenced in the previous slide year-to-date. But I thought I would put some information in there that's new this quarter. You can see that July through September, the first quarter, we earned about one point six million dollars of profit. Then that slid a little bit, October through December, and then January through March, it slid quite a bit more. So I would expect that to continue probably the last quarter of this year, because at the end of this year, we'll have to make an adjustment for what's the claims that have been incurred but not reported as of June 30th, and that's usually a positive, well, it's an increasing adjustment, not positive for the fund balance, but positive in the, as an increase of the amount that we potentially owe. So you can see there that as of March 31st, we still had a deficit of six hundred and fifty-four thousand, but that's a long way from where we started the year. We had a very good year so far. Our claims are still, year-to-date, a little bit lower than they were last year, but as I mentioned, they are growing here in the spring somewhat. We believe that the five percent increase that we experienced, that we planned next year in the medical and prescription rates will help us to continue to dig out of that hole, maybe not as fast as we came out this year, but we should still be on a positive track as long as nothing goes haywire with the monthly claims.
Mr. Brandenburg. Our target, positive fund balance of how much?
Our target fund balance is three million dollars, which is ten times our individual stop loss. We have a stop loss and an individual claim of three hundred thousand dollars. So our policy has always been to try to have a target fund balance of three million dollars.
So our goal would be with that five percent increase we've identified for next year, we're hoping maybe that by the end of next year, hopefully, we're into the positive and maybe approaching that three million dollar number.
When we did the update in the summer last year, and we, right after we had first implemented the twenty-five percent increase on medical and premium and drug premium, I estimated at that time, we would have about a three million dollar profit for the year. It looks like we're going to do a little bit better than that. Certainly hope so. But I would expect to get back to that three million dollar target. It's probably going to take about two to two and a half years on our current trajectory.
Mr. Brandenburg, as an accountant, you're using the term profit. I mean, we don't profit from the, from the account. It's, you know.
It's a self-insurance fund.
Right. Self-insurance fund, so our income right now so far is exceeding our expenses, and that's what we need to do over the next couple of years to get back to that three million dollar number.
It's not a profit to the board of it, it's a profit to the fund, and the fund goes to pay the claims that are incurred by the employees, and it affects the rates that both the employer and the employee have to pay into the fund.
Profit might be the right terminology. I just didn't want our employees to think that we're in any way profiting. We're making money off of the insurance fund. It stays all in the insurance fund, and certainly is what we would predict a year away, what we predict there. Hopefully, maybe a need not to increase healthcare, but it was what we'll make our healthcare predictions of then. Sorry. Go ahead.
That's fine. I think, turn it over to Mrs. Keller this time to talk about some of the changes that were made to the plan recently.
Right. And as Dr. Michael said, you know, these are predictions. We can predict what we think is going to happen with our claims, but again, you know, we don't know the health of our employees from year to year. I think one of the things that we were tasked with last year, and we had the dilemma of having such a large rate increase last year that we had to, you know, both on the board's side and the employee's side, was what else can we look at other than just constantly, you know, increasing premiums? What else can we look at? So we did look at what we could tweak in our plan that might be small tweaks. I think we, you know, we're very careful about, let's not give a huge rate increase and then also take away benefits, because that's like a double whammy. So what small tweaks can we make to the plan that would help? We did work a lot with the healthcare committee. The healthcare committee, just to remind everybody, does sit all three groups, ANS, WCTA, WC ESP members, along with board representatives. And we worked monthly to come up with some ideas. We worked with Cigna, we worked with Bolton. They provided us lots of data to review to really look at where our claims were, you know, and what trends were out there that maybe we weren't taking advantage of in our plan. We really focused on the medical and pharmacy piece. We looked at, you know, some more wellness initiatives and how we can just have better oversight of how our dollars are spent and where that money's going. And then some of it, too, is just looking at what are the norms now? You know, our plans haven't consistently been updated for many years, which is okay, but there are different norms in the world now that we could look at. So briefly, and I think that this information has already been shared with you, but just to give you an overview, a very brief overview of some of the changes that are going to take effect for July 1st, is to implement a separate out-of-pocket maximum on the plan from what our medical out-of-pocket maximum is. So we'll have a separate out-of-pocket maximum just for our prescription drug coverage. We're also making a change in copayments. Our regular office visit copayments will stay the same. Urgent care copayments will stay the same, but we are going to promote telehealth by taking that But we are going to promote telehealth by taking that co-payment to a zero co-pay. And then on the flip side, increasing emergency room co-payments. We are also tweaking the 90-day prescription refills a little bit. We're going to limit the network in which employees can get 90-day prescriptions. To counterbalance that, the 90-day prescriptions that you can get at a retail pharmacy will actually now be two co-payments instead of three. So that's kind of a trade-off there. We're also going to require some generic equivalents. You have to have a, your doctor has to state that you have to have the brand name drug if the generic equivalent is available. If not, they're going to, they're going to pay a little more for that. If we have specialty drugs that are covered under our pharmacy benefit, they will have to be, it must be filled through the Cigna Home Delivery Pharmacy instead of going to the, to the pharmacy to receive those. We're also going to look at some additional management of, of drugs. Have Cigna, we've asked Cigna to monitor some things a little closer. Some of that has to do with opioids, to not be able to get larger doses of opioids than what might, might be necessary. So it might not be more of a cost-saving method, but more of a, like a safety and health issue. And then we are all going to add a co-payment onto non-preferred brand diabetes medications only for the reason that we, we had originally not had any co-payment on that. And we're, you know, we're looking at why did we treat that differently than, than other drugs? And that was, that was pretty much the only reason for that. That was it. So I think for any employees that are listening, we will be implementing these changes effective July 1. We will be communicating these changes very soon. Developing open enrollment materials now, and that will go out very soon to all employees.
Okay, and I'm sure David and Gina would entertain any questions the board might have. One thing I do want to say to staff, A and S staff, ESP staff, and teacher staff that have worked hard to help reduce our healthcare costs. It's not only helping the employee with potential increases in the future. It's obviously helping our fund balance as well. I think it's one more example of how we're working together to limit costs to taxpayers in the long run and how, again, as WCPS, we're working to limit our requests to the county commissioners and state for funding. Again, last year, I believe, if I'm correct, somewhere between 7.8 and 8.2 million, depending upon whether we include grant funds. It took that much alone just on the WCPS side. That was required to be paid by taxpayers. So this type of cooperation and this type of, these types of changes to our healthcare plan still provide excellent, excellent healthcare coverage to our employees, but will help moderate increases in costs in the future, we're hopeful. So again, staff will be glad to take any questions you might have.
Mr. Gifford?
I got one, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine.
Have we identified any pattern? I'm going back here to the July, September, October, December, January, March, where the, you went from 1.5 down to 1.2, down to 638,000. Is, have we looked at a pattern if it's just kind of something that happens in Washington County? Or is it a national thing where that kind of trend always kind of, kind of flows down towards the end of the fiscal year?
We haven't compared it to any national norms or anything like that. It's just, I think what, what, part of what you see is just the, the continual steady growth of, of medical inflation, you know, and, and changes brought about by improved technology also produce higher costs. So we, we've tend, we've seen that in the past. We've seen where, where we, the claims just tend to grow over a year slowly. And that's, that's why we need, you know, we needed the increase, even though it's just 5% this year. Our actuaries, our consultants estimated that the medical trend is going to be about a 5%. And that's actually lower than it was for the last couple of years in, in the industry-wide, you know, norms.
I know a few years ago, when we were looking at that deficit, we were thinking it was going to take a while to get out of there. Do you think we're on track to get before, to get there beforehand, or are we still?
Earlier in the year, I thought we were on track to get there way beforehand. And then as I've seen, it eroded some. I would say we're still on track to get there in a period of two to three years. I think when we first talked about it in August, we said it might take three years to achieve it. I, I think it'll still take at least two years to, to achieve, to get back to our target.
Okay, and we have a wellness program with our employees. Is, are we still working on that?
We somewhat have a wellness program for employees. We would like to build that. We have been working right now with grant money from Cigna to build programs. We've offered, you know, things like free flu shots, biometric screenings at different locations. We also offered, kind of, we kind of took some of the money and built it in as, which we didn't offer this year, but the previous two years, is the grant opportunities to all the schools that they could actually request a grant to be used for something specific that they wanted to promote at their school, whether it be after-school classes for staff or, you know, some type of aerobic activity. Or, hey, we all are training to participate in a race, and this is what we'd like to use our money for. So we've been promoting things like that, just, you know, kind of putting it out there as, you know, you locations know best what your staff would want. But we would like to develop a more robust program that would be district-wide.
I would like to see that, too. I mean, I think it's, it's very important to, to have those because you do reap the benefits of your employees when they're well, you know. So I've seen that with other companies, that they had these programs and they've seen significant changes in their health status, so, and costs that are going down. So, you know, and it's tough to get everyone involved, but if you get a few people, that's great. So thank you.
Any other questions? Am I missing anyone? Nope?
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you both.
Thanks. One additional item, as part of my superintendent report, to have a long list of accomplishments that occurred in recent weeks. And I'm debating whether to actually share them all because I'd like to see if we could get some of these people potentially here for some recognition. I will note a couple of them and some other things here. Our homeland security program was voted as an outstanding program, one of the best in the state. Mr. Brad Stottemeyer is a teacher in that program from Tech High. And he was honored here recently, as well as our associate superintendent, chief academic officer, Dr. Pugh, was honored part of the CTE state program and Innovation to CTE awards. So we have a lot to be proud of at Tech High and Dr. Pugh. We did have one of our middle schools rate a superior rating on a maintenance survey that comes out every year. And I'd like to hold that announcement until we can see if we can have some maintenance staff come in from the school and, and accept some recognition with that. I did notice that one of our students, Matthew Rockwell, a graduating junior at Clear Spring High School, was named State Maryland Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year. And while we certainly can't take credit for the, the Boys and Girls Club award, we certainly want to congratulate Matthew for that accomplishment. We did have two schools that got recertification for the Maryland School Green Status, Fountaindale Elementary and Clear Spring Elementary. We have nine schools plus the outdoor school that are identified as part of the Maryland Green School Award Program. We will be delaying our meeting, and I think we'll probably talk about that maybe at the end of the program. So May 14th through May 18th is Pupil Personnel Worker Week. And we have a number of pupil personnel workers in our organization. They work very hard with students to help them receive various services, help them with their attendance, help them with some of their discipline challenges, help them significantly with homeless issues and just a whole host of things. And they work extremely hard, so we do want to make note of that, that during May 14th through the 18th is Pupil Personnel Worker Week. And I thank all of them for their service, as well as Carol Costello and her work with that team. We did see, receive word of two social studies awards this past weekend. And I'm going to save some of that information. But we do have a state winner from a teacher at North High. We have a state winner as a student from Boonsburg Middle School. So I want to see if we can get those individuals here at a future board meeting to recognize them appropriately. I did want to let the board know that we did have a listening session last week at Williamsport High School. A little bit of difficulty with 81 and whatever the traffic issue was, but slowly, one by one, people filled in, including Chris, our new board rep. And Chris, I think I heard mentioned, you mentioned the other day that you were interested in salads, I think, for some of our student meals. And I think I just heard tonight, potential of a salad bar. So one of your issues you might be taking on, you might already have solved before you take office, over from Ibrahim. The last comment I'd probably like to make, we, we've had some announcements that we've made about some technology challenges we've had over the last couple of days. Actually, on Sunday, we had a small fire here in our mulch that was put down Thursday and Friday. It happened around back of the building. The smoke detectors, you know, activated, fire alarm went off. The fire department responded. After looking around a little bit, they found smoke in the building, but we couldn't quite determine where it was coming from. Here it was actually outside in our mulch, pulled in through a vent. Unfortunately, that vent immediately hit our server room. And what we've heard from IBM folks, it's not unusual. We, we have large canisters there of agent, I think it's called Inergent, that activates in the room when there's smoke or heat, and it doesn't spray water. It actually is a chemical that hits the air and sucks all the oxygen out of the air and extinguishes fire. Unfortunately, sometimes it triggers issues with computer systems. And we had six of our blade servers go down, and it's affected a variety of our software capabilities. But everything right now is back up except for synergy. So some of our grading, student view, parent view part is still disruptive. We're, got our fingers crossed here in the next day or so, we'll have that restored. We apologize for the inconvenience, but sometimes something like fire is something we just cannot control. Fortunately, it was controlled, there wasn't any greater issue. And I think that's all I want to share for tonight. But I am excited for a number of things we're going to bring forward, maybe at a future meeting to recognize some folks.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. You go into personnel action? Dr. Bishop?
Good evening, Superintendent Michael and elected board members. As discussed earlier in closed session, there are several staff changes for your review. At this time, I ask for your approval of today's personnel actions.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Is there a motion?
Certainly.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, the motion is on approval of today's personnel actions. All those in favor? Seven to zero. Thank you, Dr. Bishop.
Thank you.
And President Williams, if I could, I would like to make an announcement of some of the changes we, you just approved. Dwayne McNairin, we're excited, will be returning to the county. He was here for many years and was in Frederick County for the most recent time period. But he'll be returning as principal of E. Russell Hicks, starting July 1st. Carly Pumpries, one of our content specialists here at the board, will be principal of Clear Spring Elementary. Sharon Palm will be principal of Fountain Rock Elementary. Matthew Semler will be principal at Jonathan Hager Elementary. Mike Tlimko will be principal at Pleasant Valley Elementary. And I'm pleased to announce the, the approval of Mr. Cody Pine, who's worked as acting director of career in technology education. Now will be supervisor of career in technology education. He's done an excellent job, works tirelessly for our CTE programs. I'm very excited for him. And Mr. Bob Alton will change from acting director of technology to the director of technology. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to reports to the board. First is the legislative briefing on the 2018 Maryland legislative session with Mrs. Artif Cade, our legislative representative, and Mr. Trotta, our chief legal counsel. Good evening, Mrs. Cade.
Thank you very much. Make it small.
Small.
You're telling me to be brief. Thank you very much. It's wonderful to be here. It's wonderful to have the session over. Each of you have received the MAVE 2018 legislative session summary and education bill highlights. And on the second page of that is a listing by subject matter. And so it seemed inappropriate to try and write a report that, again, said the same things that MAVE has said so effectively. Besides the little listing by subject matter, as you go on then through the report, there is a buildup on each of those bills so that you can keep it as a handy-dandy reference if somebody asks you about anything that happened in the Maryland legislature. And you're always welcome to call me as well. But there's still, of course, a lot that I would like to say. First of all, I think there's been great participation here among you about the legislative session. I know that you've been getting not only my reports, but you've been getting from Pazam. The superintendent has gotten weekly, I think, weekly updates on things. The finance directors have gotten the MAVE updates each week of bills that were being heard. Some of you came and testified, some of your staff came and testified. And the, the response team was receiving many emails all the time. And of course, Jamie Brown has done a marvelous job, again, of keeping us up to date on what is passing, what is happening on the various bills. And then Tony is an invaluable member of your staff and, in his interest and his knowledge in all of these areas. But, so I was trying to kind of come up with an interesting approach to telling you what happened. And I don't know that I, this is going to be too enchanting, but what will cause you, what new legislation will cause your staff the most intense workload? Well, I think you already know that. I think you've spent much of today, or your staff has, was that a meeting with the board? On the State Schools Act. And that clearly has so many dimensions to it, and they're so important. And they're time-consuming, and some of them are costly. And so that is clearly the most work-intensive piece of legislation that passed, as far as I can see. What one, what legislation really affects your employees, your teachers? There are a couple of bills. The one we talked about that, that allows a teacher in a disciplinary case to, to be brought to mediation instead of handled by the board. And that is, is going to, you know, could potentially cause you some costly, it may be costly to you, to have that happening. But there are also the public school, I mean, the, the bill that, Senate Bill 32, which you'll be needing to make certain that all employees are aware of. This is that you may not knowingly fail to report suspected abuse or neglect of a child if you have the, a proper actual information about it or sight of it. And that if you don't report that, if a teacher or employee that is required to do so doesn't do that, it now will be a misdemeanor. So that's a matter for education of your employees. One of the, the most logical relief bill, I would say, is the bill that allows you to extend your school year for five additional days at the end of the school year. That sounds real simple, but you know there's a whole lot going on about what it really means. Do you have to have snow days, an excess of snow days, and then be allowed to do that? Or can you, from the start, extend your, your school year by five days? That's being looked at by, by attorneys general. And, and the intent of the bill clearly was that you, when you're calendaring, you could already schedule in those five additional days. But whether that's what the legal people are going to finally say, what do you think?
We've reported, I think, to the board that the state board actually discussed this subject, I believe, last Tuesday, and they have provided some preliminary guidelines with regard to this particular area. And there is some, around the state, some dispute as to exactly what the legislation was intended to do. We're hopeful that the, the state board's guidance will, will put to rest some of those questions.
Our goal, I think, will continue to try to be out by June 15th, whenever possible. What I have seen from the state board is they haven't granted many waivers to a lot of school districts, and some of them are forced to go well beyond their calendar already. So I think to our public, to our staff, to our students, we need to be flexible. If we hit a year of a lot of snow and we didn't receive a waiver or something, we well could be going. be going into this five days beyond for students and beyond that for staff. So we just need to be flexible going forward. We'll make greater announcement, communication about that going forward. And we'll continue to follow the guidance that's coming out. That I've seen a lot of chatter back and forth between the superintendents of confusion on these five days, but we'll, we'll get that all straightened out.
Dr. Michael, just
Yes.
To add to what you're saying, I think where the state board was particularly upset in regards to the groups that were asking for waivers was the fact that there was no, no effort on their part during the regular school year to start making those up. I think if we're wise, we look at our calendar and say, okay, we have early, early dismissals, or not early dismissals, but early absences or days missed, that we have something built in to say, okay, President's Day, day after Easter, and any other days that we might have already in the calendar, that we use those before we get to a point that we have to go to the state board and say, look, you know, we've, we've done what we could do. You know, we wouldn't really particularly like a waiver. That didn't happen, apparently, with those schools. And I think that's why the state board, I was at that meeting, is why the state board went the way they went.
I think what we'll do, unless the board has any objection, we're going to make some bolder print across the bottom of next year's calendar, just to make it clear. We do have a statement on there that the board has the right to add and adjust to the calendar, but I think we'll actually list the possibility of some of those other days that I have seen schools get waivers on to at least go to school on those days. So we'll, we'll probably make that clear unless there's any objection from the board for next year's calendar as we publish that to the folks. But Mr. Radner, a point well taken.
All right, there's, in looking at legislation having to do with school construction, we, of course, were successful in the last five minutes of the legislative session. Well, no, actually, it was the other bill that passed at five minutes up. But the repeal of the advisory school design review, that, that third reader passage in the Second House did not happen until the last day. The other local bill that changed the superintendent's hiring practice passed at between five and four minutes of midnight on the last day. So it's just, it, and you know, it wasn't a controversial bill, it, but you just had to keep there nagging and making sure that things were happening. And then you have to be polite enough that you don't offend the people that you are pushing to make things happen. But they were both passed. They have not been signed, they're not, they're not yet on the schedule for either of the last two bill signings. Those, those schedules haven't come out. We don't expect any problem. We have been in touch with Kroschenk's office about those, and his staff person has been in touch now with both Tony and me. And she will let us know when those are going to be signed. The, there's another little bill that I mentioned before that just says that counties have to be vigorous in their review of school construction plans when, when you apply for building permits. But of course, the big thing on school construction was the NOT bill. And it's multiple, what, 54 pages or something like that? So I'm going to give you, and I think many of your staff have been working pretty closely with that bill. But I'll just give you a few of the, the things that happened in that bill. We talked last time about the fact that no longer will the Board of Public Works be the final say on the school construction allocations, but that that will be the interagency for school construction itself. But the bill does broaden opportunities for alternative financing. It, it requires each board to designate an emergency man, to designate emergency management shelters. It encourages bulk purchasing and intergovernmental purchasing. It, it establishes, again, clearly, the, and changes the membership of the Interagency Commission, Committee, Commission on School Construction. And their purpose is to develop and approve policies, procedures, guidelines, and regulations on state school construction allocations to local jurisdictions in an independent and, and, and independent based manner. And the makeup of that commission now is the, it still has Planning Department and General Services, two appointed by the governor, two by the Senator, by the Senate, and two by the House of Delegates. And the chairman will be appointed by a joint decision of the governor, the Speaker of the House, and the president of the Senate. Now, normally the governor has, I mean, the president, chairman has been the superintendent of schools. And I would guess that's where it will go again. But that, I thought was a cute little thing. They kind of stuck in there. As I read it, you will no longer have to do the annual plans or the long range plans. I don't know if you found that in that bill or not. There are new appeal procedures have been established. There's going to be consultation with the Maryland Stadium Authority on technical assistance and public-private partnership programs and financing thereof. It, it develops incentives for you to get, if you use prototype designs. This is an idea that comes up over and over about using the same school design in many places. And also incentives if you build net zero school buildings with the energy in, energy out. There are, if appropriate, that you'll be doing an assessment of your buildings. And there is the possibility that they, the assessments may be used as part of the funding process. I think this has been a fear in a way that you have had because you maintain your buildings so well, whereas other counties don't all do so well. And it would be inappropriate for them to get more of the money from the state because they hadn't been taking good care of what they already have. There'll be a local share of school construction cost revolving loan fund. And this is an area where this, the county could borrow money from the state on a no interest loan to put up their share. And when they wouldn't have to put it all up at the same time because they could get a loan to, to put it up, to put part of it up and pay it back over time, which could be a very valuable thing. And you know, there's a school safety grant program within this bill, as well as in the School Safety Act, and a $10 million allocation here for assuring that you can put in locking doors and things of that sort. And you will no longer have to get, be LEED certified. You'll, you'll be required to do something comparable to LEED or to some other energy standard, but you won't have to pay for the LEED process. So, and then there's a work group that's much broader that includes Pazam and MAVE and, and a group of people who will be looking at all of these policies and procedures and making suggestions and so forth. So that bill reflects pretty closely what the NOT Commission report was about. And I do believe you've had people working pretty closely on that throughout the development of that. Looking to the future, what bills look really kind of to the future? Well, a little bill, and I mentioned it last time, House Bill 281, is the Maryland Center for Computing Education. Not only are you going to be required to have a computer course in every high school and, and, and energy toward having computer classes at the elementary and middle school as well, but there will be money to beef up the Maryland Center for Computing Education, which I think will allow a lot of your teachers to go for training in, and particularly teachers in elementary who, who may not have had as much of that highly technical training, so that they can be effective in this area. But of course, the, the bigger bill that looks to the future is the Kerwin Bill. And we've talked and talked about the Kerwin Commission and so forth. And the fact that next year now will be the year that the Kerwin Commission is required to put dollar signs behind all of their initiatives. But they passed the bill this year that kind of contains their thoughts and their areas of focus, and put a little dab of money in. There's a teacher recruitment training program, which each year has to have $250,000. An early literacy intervention grants, it can go to 50 Title I schools, grants of up to $75,000 each. And those will be two programs that are working specifically with pre-K and up through second grade in, in reading readiness, reading, literacy intervention. I should use the proper term. There's a commission, the Commission on Innovation and Excellence in Education is, is again, established. And this, this is a real focus on early childhood education. And this is just kind of the beginning of the really big discussion of pre-K and pre-K for everyone. There's the Learning in Extended Academic Program, and that's a program to work with at-risk students. There's four and a half million dollars in that program. And again, the guidelines will be developed. There's a stimulation of the teaching fellowships for the Maryland, the teaching fellowships for the Maryland program and existing program. There'll be $2 million a year for that. And that's a program to, I believe it's like scholarships for people that are going to then commit to be teaching, particularly if they're teaching in Title I schools. And the Career Technology Education Innovative Grants, and there, there will be, I believe, again, $2 million, but it's where a program is developed, it's cooperation between the Board of Education, a community college, and a, an industry partner to provide some very specific and, and perhaps newly created career technology. It was really interesting to hear your young people who are, who are in these special programs and the areas in which they are already becoming experts. And it's, it's quite impressive. I, I like to, to be here for those sessions because you're achieving so much and your young people are accomplishing so much, that I'm very proud to be affiliated with your school system. And clearly, the boldest new law is this, the gaming revenues, the lock, the lockbox legislation. Now, that will be on the ballot this fall. And it will, if passed, and I would guess it will pass because it's for education, and it's saying that money from the casinos that has been going into the Education Trust Fund, but really kind of replacing other money, will now have to be supplemental education money. And it would be $175 million the first year, and 250 the next year, and 375, maybe 125 the first year. And, and then all of that gaming revenue money that goes to education would go into it. So that could be a real, a, a good bit of additional education money. So you, this year, there really was a lot of focus on the need for enriching education, both in the Kerwin and the NOT and in the school safety. We didn't have a lot of, of really contentious bills that, that we really had to fight against. We had a lot of bills that we needed to try and make better. But it was a year when there was money because of, I guess, because of the new tax law. And so they could say, okay, well, this program's going to get 200 million, like they've been put in, I didn't mention that, in the Kerwin, but 200 million that has to be taken out of the income tax revenue and put into the, to the education fund. So, so when you have money, it makes life a lot easier. The budget went through quite easily. You know, there was no discussion really about all the basic education funding. I mean, that was just, okay, of course. So it was all about these additional pots of money. And now, the, the interesting part is how you get your share of that money. I mean, one of the bills that's in, that has $30 million in it, is going to probably end up going mostly to Baltimore City for air conditioning and that sort of thing. No school system can get more than half of it. But it's probably not something that you'll be able to qualify for much of. And in all of these grant programs that I just listed, there are lots of pots of money, but trying to make sure that this school system gets its fair share or more is, is a task that your staff will have to be attending to very closely. It's election year, there's a whole lot of electioneering going on. A lot of the bills, people wanted to sponsor to have their names on, to be able to campaign on, and that's natural, and that's not unexpected. So we, and, and anything that the governor vetoes this year cannot be brought up for override at the beginning of next session. That's why they rushed through certain bills so that they could, that they thought the governor was going to veto. If he vetoed them, then they had time to override them before the end of the session. So it's, it was kind of, in a way, a peaceful, more peaceful session than most. Not without its heartaches, not without its disappointments. But actually, I think most people came out of it feeling that, that, that the, we were, that Maryland is going in the right direction in the, certainly in the field of education. And I'd be happy to try and answer questions. I, my brain has forgotten a lot since, in the last three weeks, about the specifics of any of the bills, but I could try and answer.
Any questions for Mrs. Cade?
I'd just like to make one comment. I've never been able to reconcile the fact that they passed Senate Bill 1265, the Safe to Learn Act of 2018, and yet overwhelmingly, it seemed like, didn't like the reportable offense law that we, I mean, it goes right along with school safety.
Yes, that, that was a real disappointment. And, and I think Senator Seraphini is going to be working with various of us through the session. That was one specific bill. And your, Carol Costello did a marvelous job of testifying. And yet, some people heard it wrong and thought that it was targeting certain people. I think if we had emphasized more the juvenile services part of it, rather than everybody needing to make that report, it, it might have gone better. And it, it got so much focus by those committees, and those were committees that don't usually hear education bills. They were the judicial committees, and they're the, they're the toughest around. They like to ask, you know, they like to pick things apart even more, well, all of them do. But so they, they, you know, they, they looked at it. And there wasn't a ground swell from a lot of the other counties that said they needed. And we just couldn't make it. That was a real disappointment.
And yet, the various representatives from the counties in MAVE
All supported it.
All supported it.
I think everybody who understood it, supported it, and, and yet, we couldn't get them to hear, we, we tried.
There you go. And the interesting part of your comment is that actually, the school safety bill now imposes a new obligation on local boards of education to develop plans for delivering behavioral health and wraparound services to students who exhibit behaviors of concern. And that was, that was the purpose of the bill that we had introduced, is to, is to be able to help those students. So while they didn't take action, well, they, they heard our bill, they didn't pass it, they did incorporate, to a certain extent, in the School Safeties Act of the concern that we had. And, and so now, this, this is something that really is going to, I think, benefit students to, to be able to provide these types of services for students who are, are students to, to be able to provide these types of services for students who are exhibiting some, some struggles.
Well, Mrs. Cade, it's been a pleasure working again with you through another legislative session, and I thank you, we thank you for your, for being our eyes and ears and legs and monopolists. You do a tremendous amount of legwork. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you. I, I.
I just had one comment, so I didn't want you to get away. Apparently, you're like this god down there, I hear. And you've been goddess, goddess down there. And I know you're only 39, but how long have you been doing this? I mean, you, it's like, everyone knows you down there. It's kind of.
I have, I started in, in Maryland government in 1971 as the Charles County Administrator. And then I went to the work for the governor of, when it was Blair Lee, the acting governor, in 1977. And then I was married to a state senator. I was a Democrat, I was working for the Democratic governors. He was a Maryland, I mean, he was the Republican Majority Leader. So I was down there all the time. I did all the, then I went to the Housing and Community Development Department, and I testified on all our legislation. So I was at the legislature all the way through, you know, the 80s and into the 90s, and then I went to work for Anne Arundel County. But so if I, you know, I, there are a lot of people I don't know anymore, but because there, people are getting older and leaving, but I still know a lot of the people there. And I, and I, it's home for me, in a way.
Well, it's nice to have you on our side.
Certainly is. You may not know them, but I'm sure they know you by reputation, and we're so grateful to benefit from those years of expertise.
Well, I still like to be down there as, or I would be working with you all on this. And I really have, I do enjoy the subject matter, and I enjoy the other people that I get to work with. But I really believe that education is so key, and working on behalf of better and better education is certainly worthwhile.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Safe travel out. Mr. Trotto, you're going to stay put because you have something for us?
I do. And I'd like to invite Mr. Tishu to join me at the front table. And as he, as he comes forward, Mr. Tishu serves as the city engineer, and I wanted the board to know that we work with the city of Hagerstown from time to time on various matters, and we, we work with Mr. Tishu and also with Kathy Mayer. And they're always supportive and very helpful, and we're very appreciative of the support that they provide to us. And so I just wanted to thank him and Ms. Mayer also. With regard to this particular item that we have this evening, I just wanted to provide some, some background information, some historical perspective. In 1961, the Board of Education transferred a parcel of land to the city of Hagerstown, and the land was to be used for a golf course. It was 11 acres. The parcel is located adjacent to Pangborn Elementary School. Since the city at that time had not used it for a golf course, it transferred it back to the Board of Education in 1989. And recently, we received a request from the city that we deeded back to the city of Hagerstown without any restrictions. And at this time, Mr. Tishu will address any, address the city's requests and any particular questions that you might have about that request. Thank you.
Good evening. I just want to add to what Tony said. I think there's a map in your packet that shows the parcels that we're talking about. The Board of Education owns the yellow and pink parcels. It's the pink parcel that we're talking about. In the 1980s, there was a proposal, that some of you may remember, that to close the golf course and to develop it as a commercial development. That failed. But prior to that actually failing, the city conveyed the pink parcel back to the Board of Education because they thought the golf course was going to be closed and it was going to be a commercial development. That failed, it didn't happen, it kind of added, ended kind of catastrophically, as people say. And we have no record, and we can't find anything in the land records that shows that the, the, the pink portion was ever conveyed back to the city. So I think this is where I say, congratulations, you're the proud owner of a three-hole par-10 golf course.
I'm certain we're not the only school system maybe that ever owned a golf course, but we might be the first school system that have given a golf course back to the city. All right.
What makes up this parcel? Are there some of the holes on the golf course that are there?
There are.
Which?
Holes three, four, and five.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
And I think they were developed, if you look at the map, the green area used to be part of the golf course. A lot of people don't realize that.
Yes, I do.
Across the dual highway, the golf course, but when that.
Those were, those were built after the city lost that area right along Jefferson Boulevard to that development.
Right.
In my, okay.
Right. So that's why the pink was needed. Between losing those along Jefferson and then the development across the dual highway, the pink was needed to have an actual nine-hole golf course.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there any road frontage to that property? It looks like that, on the pink, that there is some road frontage to that.
Yes, there is to, on the upper portion on the page, Morningside Drive, I believe that's called, that is a public street. On the south side, it abuts the, the townhouse manor apartments.
So is there, are there any plans for the remaining land that aren't holding a golf, one of those three golf holes?
So if you convey it back to us, the city would own the blue and the pink, and it, the blue and the pink have golf holes on them. So the only, so there wouldn't be any remaining lands that don't have golf on them. Does that answer your question?
Well, I'm not that familiar with how much land each golf hole takes. Is the entire 11 acres covered with golf?
Yes, there's actually three holes on that 11 acres.
Okay.
Is there any plans for the blue property to be sold to development?
Not at this time. I mean, golf nationwide is in decline. We have to subsidize the golf course with tax dollars to keep it, to keep it open. But the Maryland Council, even as late as this afternoon, talked about the golf course, and there's no imminent plans to close it. In fact, they stated pretty strongly they want to keep it open. I think someday that could happen, but as, right now, there's no imminent plans.
We want a piece of the profit if you sell it, just, just out of.
Are there 18 or nine holes of golf there?
It's a nine-hole golf course.
It's a nine-hole, and we have, we own three of them?
You have three of them.
So, and we've owned that since 1961.
You bought the property originally in 1961.
So what's our profit? How much, does it cost for nine, nine rounds of golf?
You're losing money.
Yeah.
We're glad that.
Not sure you want to ask that question.
We are glad that they are maintaining and taking care of this. For what they charge to play those nine holes, there is no real profit there.
No, no, it's subsidized.
I mean, that's, that's why the city is subsidizing, because it's just, there's no profit.
No way. So there's no action required? This is just a report at this time?
That's correct. We wanted to first brief the, the members of the board and the community, and there will be an action item scheduled for the next board meeting.
Okay, all right.
I've heard reports that Mr. Trotto visits Pangborn School a lot now. I know why.
Thank you, Mr. Trotto.
Thank you, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotto. All right, at this time, we'll have board member committee reports. Mr. Ridenhour, would you like to begin down there?
Far as not met, we do, we, we are originally scheduled for the 22nd. That may change as a result of our need to make some adjustments to our board members, or board meetings.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher?
Policy Committee met on April the 24th, where we finished preparing the Teaching About Controversial Issues policy that passed on first read earlier tonight. We spent the bulk of that meeting discussing the Maryland Safe to Learn Act that Mrs. Cade was included in her report. It's a major piece of legislation, and it's going to affect public schools in many ways very significantly, including, in the case of the Policy Committee, the creation of several new policies that we're going to have to work on. At this time, we don't have a definite May meeting date, again, as Mr. Ridenhour mentioned because of some changes in our schedules. I'll announce it as soon as we know.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mr. Gassford?
Thank you. Facilities will not be meeting in May, and we may have a meeting in June. I'll let you know.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bigford?
We'll be meeting bright and early, 8:00 a.m. on Tuesday, May 22nd.
Thank you. Mrs. Murray?
Thank you. Curriculum instruction met on April 24th. Dr. Kuhannick gave an update on PreVeeLearn, which is an online diagnostic tool for teachers that helps in several areas, one being to pinpoint students' learning strengths in ELA and math, which provides instant results that can assist teacher in instruction. We also heard from Eric Michael. Mr. Michael discussed requirements given to WCPS from Senate Bill 1060, Heroin and Opioid Education and Community Action Act of 2017, along with House Bill 72 of 2016, Sexual Abuse and Assault Awareness and Prevention. These new requirements will be met through the physical education health curriculum in elementary and middle schools, and the Health, Life Skills, and Financial Literacy curriculum in high schools.
Thank you. Mr. Diallo, do you have anything for us this afternoon, this evening?
I have nothing.
Thanks.
Hunter, miscellaneous business, we have consideration, we have, annually, we have the opportunity to submit names of our members, a member, to MAB, which would be a submission to the nominating committee. And presently, Mr. Ridenhour is serving on the Board of Directors at MAB. And my understanding is that he may serve up to three consecutive terms. He's just, I think, finishing his first year. So at this time, we open the floor for nominations, and I would like to see Mr. Ridenhour's name placed in nomination so that we can affirm and endorse his name going forward to the nominating committee.
I would like to make a motion to submit the name of Wayne Ridenhour, the school board member who has an interest in serving as a member of the MAB Board of Directors.
Thank you, Mr. Gassford. Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. All those in favor of Mr. Ridenhour's name being put forth to the nominating committee?
That's railroaded.
All right, thank you. Railroaded?
No discussion on that one.
I'm recusing myself since I'm already there.
All right, six to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, future agenda items is the second thing on the list for miscellaneous business. You have in your packet a list of upcoming agenda items, and I just misplaced mine. We have on July 17th, discipline in school suspension and out-of-school suspension. That would be a report. We have an update on autism life skills and summit programs, and we'll stop there. If you have any suggested reports that you would like or topics that you would like to have placed on the agenda for an upcoming meeting, if you would let a member of the Agenda Planning Committee know, we'll see what we can do about getting it on the list of future meetings. Mr. Ridenhour mentioned that we would be having a change to our schedule. There's been a change in the time of the Board of County Commissioners Budget Hearing that's being held on Tuesday, May 15. We had scheduled a meeting of our board for that day, so to make it possible for us to attend the Commissioners Budget Hearing, we are going to be moving our meeting from May 15, which is the third week in May, which is a regular week for us, to the fourth week in May, which would be May 22. So please make note of that change. And I think that's all I have for future agenda items and calendar changes. So that brings us to board member comments. Mr. Diallo, would you like to begin down there?
Sure. I'd just like to thank Dr. Henson of Funkstown Elementary School for inviting me for their Early Childhood Program and their Week of Young Child. I honestly enjoy it. It's probably one of my favorite things I've done all year. I love interacting with the kids and my, and my student tours. And honestly, I've never been to Funkstown, but Funkstown's probably like my favorite place, and I wish I'd gone there when I was in pre-K, so. Anyway, thank you to her and her kids for that.
And I was also there. I think Dr. Michael was leaving when I was coming in. When I was leaving, you were coming in. We had two of the greatest tour guides. They were hysterical. They were four going on 14, and I loved every minute. Worked together Wednesday. It was a great time. On Friday, April 20th, I was here for the Envirothon. Clear Spring Hancock and Smithsburg was represented, and congratulations to the first-place winners, the Clear Spring High School Trailblazers. It was very interesting. I think it's the 27th year for the Envirothon, first time being held here. It's very exciting. I really enjoyed it. And then I got to go to see Hairspray at the Barbara Ingram School, at the Maryland Theater, put on by Barbara Ingram. It was fantastic. I kept saying to my sister, I can't believe these are high school kids. They, they're, they're like professionals. And I took my 13-year-old grandson, and the first thing he said was, when it was over, can we see this again? He loved it. So it was a great time. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Bigford?
Nothing for me?
Nothing for you? Mr. Stauffer?
I'd just like to, again, commend all those that were recognized, the Geography B winners and the Skills USA Champions and the Teacher of the Year. I'd just like to say, as a former social studies teacher, I'm glad that geography is emphasized because during my almost four decades of teaching, I had some students who would seriously tell me that the river that separates Maryland and West Virginia was the Mississippi. I knew I had my roar cut out.
Mr. Gassford?
Thank you. It was a privilege to attend the Teacher of the Year Award banquet. I think almost all of us were there. It was nice to have that. Congratulations to all the nominees. A lot of great teachers were there that evening and were recognized. They were very enthused about recognizing their friends and coworkers, but the five finalists, and then down to Janine. It was also a very nice evening. So congratulations to everybody involved, or the folks who helped put that on, and it was just a nice night to have all our colleagues there, and we had a good time. So thank you for letting us attend that.
Mrs. Fisher?
I have nothing.
Mr. Ridenhour?
Just a couple of things, real quickly. Dr. Michael's mentioned it without mentioning the name. We had a winner at Maryland State History Day Contest, who will move on to the national contest. And the reason I'm mentioning her is because I got a chance to read this. I was asked to read it and, and offer advice, and let me tell you something, for an eighth grade student, there was very limited advice that I could give. It was exceptional. My wife read it to help with the grammar, and she said, she was just blown away. It's a former colleague of ours, it's Ellie Hardings. She wrote, on the topic of her paper was the Calverts, the Crosslands, and the Maryland flag. And when she was receiving her award from President Miller, he mentioned to her that he was a Calvert and wanted to read the paper, and she just took her paper and handed it to him, said, well, here, take this one. So he's reading it. It is, it was exceptional, and I'm very proud of her. Plus, you know, a week or so before that, she was one of the, I think she was the only middle school performer at the honors music recital at the, at the museum. And so Ellie is bringing with her to Boonsborough High School next year, incredible history background and some. background and some, really some musical chops she can play. So congratulations to Ellie, and I wish her the very best at the national competition. I think she'll do well.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.